Good evening. Legal notice was given of this regular meeting of the mayor and board of all the persons this Thursday, December 12th, 2019 at 6:00 PM in this courtroom at City Hall. This is a call to order. We are going to stand for a moment of silence. And I'm asking Councilman Shaw to lead us with our invocation. And Mayor Protim, Prater, too, leave us in the pledge of allegiance.
Let's have a moment of silence. Our heavenly Father, we come to you tonight just asking you to bless our meeting tonight, Lord, as we work through the things that are so important to our city. Lord, we just thank you for this season of the year where we celebrate, Lord Jesus' birthday. You're so thankful you sent him to us, Lord. Lord, again, just be with us tonight, be with each one here. We thank them for each one that could be here tonight. Lord, we give you honor and praise for all we're about to do in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every justice of all.
Ms. Goldman, roll call, please.
Ms. Goldman?
Here.
Mr. Pryor?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Present.
Mr. Locke?
Here.
I'm present.
This meeting is in session. We have a quorum. Are there any announcements? I was told when I would give our updates on projects like the Martin Luther King Street Bridge, I was told not to kind of stop doing that. But we are at, from, oh, I wasn't supposed to tell it from the beginning. Just say where we are now.
Now.
Yes, okay. Yeah, but we, Mr. Lenore had a meeting. We meet at least bi-weekly with the State Department of Transportation and getting things done. We've got all the property done, is that correct? There were six pieces of property we had to acquire to, because the bridge that we're building is quite a bit larger than the, than a rickety bridge that's been there for all these years. So, we are, the steps, of course, was to have the bridge re-engineered. He told me not to start from the beginning. But we had to have the bridge re-engineered starting in 2017. This council gave me permission to, to do that, to have it done. And we spent about $127,000 on the plans and all of that. We then had the plan and hand meeting in July of 2018 after the plans were done. And we, the state approved those plans. We had an environmental study done by the Corps of Engineers, the United States Corps of Engineers out of Vicksburg. They found that there's a long ear bet that operates under the bridge from April to October. So, we have potential for, for, that's why we've been moving at all diligence speed because there's potential that environmental factors could, could delay us. After the plan and hand meeting in July of 2018, bridge is still open, we had, the next phase was environmental. The Corps of Engineers did that. Then the next phase was to acquire property. And we ran into quite a few problems with air property. So, we had to have several successions done to settle so that someone could sign to sell the city those five pieces of property. And we have one piece that's owned by the city itself. That's our sewer district. And your gentleman, and your gentleman at the time gave us permission to donate that property that we needed for the expansion of that bridge because it's going to be considerably wider and safer. Concrete and steel is going to last over 100 years. So, yesterday, I believe, the state, we concluded that we'd done all the property stuff. We had scheduled a meeting Monday, I believe, at 2:00. Is that right, Ms. Lenore? But it was moved. Moved to Wednesday where all the utility companies, Atmos Gas has a pipeline under the bridge, it's got to be moved over. People's Water has a water main under the bridge, it's got to be moved over. We have sewer under the bridge. The sewer has to be moved over. The city has spent, I believe, what, about $145,000 getting that done, just the sewer alone. We got to move the sewer pipes away from the bridge. And Atmos Energy is a gas line. AT&amp;T owns the poles, the power lines. They own the poles. And they're going to have to move those poles over. And, and Energy is going to move their lines over. So, that's where we are now. This is a major project for the city of Bastrop. And it takes time. And I hope people will learn that. And so, we want to put this out there because Facebook doesn't give, it's not journalism. It's gossip and innuendo. It's mostly done out of ignorance. People don't come to meetings and find out what's going on. So, so that's, that's where we are on the bridge, on the Martin Luther King Street Bridge. And we, the next phase, after the utility companies come and, and all do their plans to move, we got, they're going to go over the plans, it's another plan and hand meeting where our engineers will show them where, how close they can move their, you know, where to move their utilities, where it is in the plan. And we've got to tear down a building that Mr. Algen Caldwell has given us permission to tear down. It's a little bitty building on the southwest corner of the bridge. And we got to tear that down. City's going to do that. He's giving us permission verbal, but we're going to have to get, reduce that to writing. We've got to tear that down because the power lines are running over it right now. And Energy says we're not going to move our power lines anymore over any, any existing buildings because of liability and insurance reasons. So, he's giving us permission to tear that one down. And we'll be doing that soon. The next step, of course, is to let out bids. We did, the bids are in the newspaper on our sewer system. We got a grant for, what, $690, some thousand? We've done almost a million dollars' worth of sewer improvement. And so, that's just for, for the record. Madam, madam council lady, I thought we'd just get that in, just for the records because these are public. These meetings are public and people can look at them on our YouTube channel.
Okay.
Okay, so the-
After we get all in, how much time are we looking at after we get all this moved and all this and all that?
Well, once the, you know, once the utilities move, the utilities couldn't be moved until we got the land bought, you know? The land couldn't be bought until we got the environmental done. The environmental couldn't be done until we got the sewer steps.
Buying, purchasing the land would held us up?
Yeah, because it's air property, you know? And sometimes there's 100 people, 50 people out of state, back and forth. Yeah, this takes time. And, you know, there's so many people who, years ago, people didn't do wills at all. And people still don't do wills. And property goes down several generations in these intestate successions. So, that's where we are. But moving along, oh, you asked a question, how long? The next step, Councilman Prater, is to send it out for bids. The, the bridge, the plans are on the state's site, DOTD, Department of Transportation and Development. And companies have access to the plans and they can look and they're studying them now, I'm sure, so that they can give us a bid. And that bid process is, what, 30 days?
At least 30 days. By the time they do a notice of proceeding, they might stop. I'm saying probably June or July.
Yeah. Now, the state was trying to fast-track it faster than that. Yep.
Fast-track it really fast.
No, it's not fast. It's not fast. And we have to do it like the state and the federal government says it. This is not one of those situations where we can go take a backhoe and dig something up.
Right.
We fixed the Cleveland Street Bridge, but it's not near the structure that this Martin Luther, it's our largest bridge and our most costly bridge. We're spending three times as much in the preparation of that bridge, Martin Luther King, with the 145,000 that we're spending to move the sewer over, than we spent the, what was that, Robert, 70 some thousand on?
78,000.
78,000 to replace some, some power lines on, on a pretty simple bridge at Cleveland Street. So, it's not because we didn't overlook one bridge because of who lived around it. Yep. Yeah, Smith-Wilson Park, we got a grant to do walking trails out there. And we got environmental, we had to go through steps to prove that it was a ditch going through there instead of a creek, instead of, yeah, with the Corps of Engineers.
Mayor, can you emphasize who closed that bridge?
Yes, sir. Councilman Locke, you, you can recall in our, our second or third meeting here as mayor, and you gentlemen as councilmen, I made a statement that the bridge is probably not going to pass an inspection in December of 2018, which is a year ago, a year and 12 day, a year and 14 days the bridge, bridge been closed. So, we didn't wait until the bridge, till the state closed it. The state inspects bridges every two years. We have a parish gentleman who goes and inspects. Is that right, Mr. Gray? We have a parish gentleman who goes and inspects all of our bridges, city and parish. And when we see something that causes the bridge to be unsafe, we're not going to let people drive across those bridges and they're not safe and someone could lose their lives or, or be impaired for the rest of their lives. So, it's an inconvenience for people, but we're not going to risk people's lives.
That bridge been down, it been there for quite some time, right, Mayor?
What, Martin Luther King? One year.
One year.
One year and 14 days.
Can I ask Mr. Gray a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, Mr. Gray, how often?
Mr. Gray, can you come up and talk about, and answer the council ladies' questions?
Mr. Gray, how often does this parish person check the bridges?
It's basically whenever he feel the needs to do it. I would guess every three months or so.
Okay, and then when he finds a problem, does he contact you if it's in the city?
He let me know, just like the bridge we have closed right now. We found a washout upon it. I mean, a big washout. It was about to cave in. And we thought, when we first closed it, that we can do one lane of it. And overnight, something happened and I talked with a few people and I talked with the parish inspector. And we just suggested that we just close it all.
What happened, madam council lady, is that we went there upon inspection and there's an oak tree under the bridge that's trapped. And it's been there for a long time.
What bridge are we talking about now?
McPhee.
McPhee?
McPhee Street.
When you told it going to be closed the weekend?
Well, if, we could have got the equipment, just like this morning. We've been waiting for concrete since 8:00 this morning. We got it at 1:50 this evening. So, we have, we have to wait for other people to-
So, they're going to expedite? I'm tired of people calling, Mr. Gray, so they can't get to Spirit, so around the street.
Well, Larry, only thing I can tell you, just tell them, well, we working on it.
Yeah. Yeah, this, this stuff doesn't just happen like that. It's when you do construction, look at how long it's taken them to do the I-20 interchange at Ruston. They've been working on it four years. This stuff is engineered. It's engineered precisely. I don't know whether anybody's seen any engineering plans. And I would like for you to come across to the office, to my office, and see what, how many pages there are of engineering plans. These things are detail. People have an oversimplistic view of what, what it is to engineer a bridge and make it safe. So, that's what, that's what we dealing with, is engineering now. The, the oak tree underneath the bridge, we, we have plenty, plenty of trees in our canals that are 30, 40, 50 years old. It's not a new problem. And those trees, when they fall in the canal, water goes around them. And then you have erosion of the banks because of the viscosity of the water and the way it, it travels around. It just eats up the banks and then more trees fall in. And it's eating up some people's yards, you know, and property.
And I know we don't have, you said we don't have the equipment to do all this. What is like the closest location that we could possibly rent some equipment to maybe remove some trees or?
We already got the trees removed.
You already got the trees? So, we do have the equipment?
Yeah, we-
It's not the best now.
So, what is the closest place that we could, you know, rent the proper equipment if you need better equipment?
Well, I asked that in, from Scott. He just told me he couldn't help us out at all with that.
Yeah.
Everybody want to sell this stuff.
Yeah, and the problem, let's, let's deal with, in the realm of possibilities, the city doesn't have money. How much does it cost to cut down one tree, Mr. Gray?
Anywhere from $800 to $1,600.
Yes. And we have many, many trees in Bastrop that's between the telegram poles and the streets, which are our responsibilities. If it's in a person's yard, we have no responsibility. But there are thousands of trees that we could cut. There are hundreds and hundreds of trees in these canals that we could cut. That's why we're putting this in our watershed grant initiative application. The pre-application we're doing right now, that's what I shared with, with your council people, it's due on the 20th next week. So, we're trying to, and we ask the public to let us know of any, any flood mitigation effort that needs to be taken because now is the time to request dollars while there's dollars available in this $1.2 billion grant, watershed initiative grant. And we're working, we're photographing, we're documenting. And I'm asking the watershed, we're in District Region 3, District 3 for watershed, I'm asking that all of Stalkin Head Creek be cleaned from the city limits, out of the city limits, and even out. Problem is, when we clean our ditches, it's going to run downhill to, on Monroe, Washout Parish, which is 80 foot lower than we are. And we can't do that. The, the grant won't allow you to, you know, clean out your problem and present a problem for someone downstream. So, Ms. Kay King is back there and we've talked about a water retention facility, otherwise called a lake, something to hold. And I presented that to the, to the watershed contractors, the people who are handling this watershed. And I invite any councilman to, to take off and go to some of those meetings with us. They, we have several meetings. We had one in West Monroe last week. You may have seen TV coverage of it on Channel 8. We were there representing Morehouse Parish in Bastrop. So, we don't have the money to do all of this stuff. You know, if we want to cut trees down, we'd have to pick the trees. And then we'd have to grade and see what's the, what's the, you know, it's like a hospital that can't treat everyone. But you operate an emergency room on triage. And if someone comes in with a cold, someone comes in with pneumonia, someone comes in with gunshot to the chest, you got to treat the gunshot to the chest first. So, it's triage. And that's the way we operate with our limited funds. It would be nice if we had unlimited funds. We, we do, we know a lot of things we could do. Is that correct, Mr. Gray?
That's true. And let me say one other thing about the trees. When we go out on a call, especially at night, where a tree have fell, we kind of scan the area. If we see anything else in there that look like it's going to fall tomorrow, the next wind blow, we just go ahead and take it down then and get it all out the way. That's what we've been doing. That's why we're not getting many calls night, tonight, this year, as callouts because we've already solved some of the problem.
Yes. We've taken down quite a few trees that have not fallen.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of them.
Yes.
We just go ahead and push them down and get them all out the way and clean them up when we go clean up.
Okay. Are there any other questions, madam?
Uh-uh, thank you.
Did you get Mr. Jackson right down the river there? It's right to the river.
Right close to McPhee, you know, the-
It's out of our hands, it's in the contractor's hand.
Yeah, we've contracted that out.
The council agent.
Out of our hands, it's in the contractor's hand.
Okay.
The appeal has been done and everything for all three of them.
Okay.
You rushing by, what you rushing? You rushing, Mr. Gray? We might not be through with you.
I said, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
About your bridge, we look, if, if the weather hold up, we should be through with it Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Yeah, if the weather hold up.
I can go to Spirit Wednesday morning, right?
If the weather hold up.
Okay. I know, thank you, sir.
Yeah. Okay, public comments as they relate to items on this agenda? Is there anyone that wants to speak to anything on the agenda? Okay. Item 5, approval of previous minutes of the regular meeting of November 14th, 2019.
Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes for the meeting.
Been moved by Councilman Shaw.
I second.
Seconded by Council Lady Moore. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, have it, the minutes are approved. Item 6, Finance Committee Report, Resolution 19-1873, Bills and Claims for the Month of November 2019. Finance Committee Chair Locke.
Mayor, I move that we accept the Finance Committee Report, Resolution 19-1873, Bills and Claims for the Month of November 2019.
It's been moved by Councilman Locke.
I second.
Go ahead.
Okay. Seconded by Council Lady, Councilwoman Moore. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The resolution is adopted. Resolution 19-1873. Revenue Expense Report, October of 2019. Ms. Goldman?
Mayor, this is just a report, it's no action.
Report only, no action. Item 8, Resolution-
I have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
How's, is the revenues coming in?
Oh, yes, sir. If a little later coming, I guess things getting out everybody and this stuff, but we are, I think today we have pretty big mortgage companies paying. So, the next two weeks will be really real.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Item 8, Resolution 19-1874, Approving Participation in the Industrial Tax Program Exemption Program. If you look at Resolution, Item 8, Resolution Number 19-1874, when a company wants to, I know we were trying to get some industry here, Ms. Kay King, North Louisiana, Tanner Trichelle's Group, we wanted to try to get a car plant here, Toyota Mazda plant. And we wanted them to locate an international paper and, and others. Well, what happens is, when companies come, they look for incentives. When they built the Mercedes plant in, between Tuscaloosa and Birmingham, they wanted incentive. And the state of Alabama gave more money and more tax breaks than other states, and that's where they locate. So, what happens when a company comes, often they are making a decision pretty quickly and they ask you, what incentives do you have, Bastrop? And we have to call a meeting and then we have to talk about whether or not it, we'll give them a tax perk for 10 years to create so many jobs. Well, the state of Louisiana is trying to fix that because other states have pre-approval where you, you pre, you authorize the, the cuts. So, I'm going to read the resolution real quick. It's just three paragraphs. Resolution Number 19-1874. And remember, the purpose of this is so that if a company was interested, say, in the IP property, I'm not saying that anyone is, or is not, or any other property, if they bring a certain number of jobs, and it's 50 jobs, then they know what the tax break's going to be. And they don't have to come to us. So, it gives us a competitive edge in order that companies already know what their, what their tax status and the tax incentives that they see. So, this pre-authorizes and sets according to, let me just read it, and if there's any questions, we can talk about it. "A resolution of the city of Bastrop approving participation in the industrial tax exemption program at the city of Bastrop, Louisiana. Whereas Article 7, Section 21, so Paragraph F of the Louisiana Constitution provides for the Board of Commerce and Industry," that's the BCI, "with the approval of the governor to approve contracts for the exemption of ad valorem," that's property taxes, "for a new manufacturing establishment or in addition to an existing manufacturing establishment on such terms and conditions as the Board, with the approval of the governor, deemed in the best interest of the state. And whereas the city of Bastrop hereby resolves that any project meeting the current or future criteria for an industrial tax exemption for projects which provide for the creation or retention of 50 or more jobs and which provide for the exercise of the option in the Louisiana Constitution is automatically approved for the term and/or percentage of ad valorem," that's property taxes, "exemption granted in the contract approved by the Board of Commerce and Industry and the Louisiana Department of Economic Development. This resolution provides for the reduction or loss of exemption based upon the applicant's compliance with the contract, has the specific and implicit approval of the city of Bastrop to submit the applying project to the Louisiana Economic Development and the Board of Commerce and Industry for final approval." So, even if we grant someone who, a company who comes in this exemption, it still has to clear the Louisiana Economic Development and the Board of Commerce and Industry. Whereas, the city of Bastrop hereby resolves that any project involving less than the criteria or the retention of 50 jobs may apply to the city for consideration of an ad valorem tax reduction on a case-by-case basis. The city reserves the right to approve or deny the request based on the considerations the considered best interests of the city of Bastrop. Documentation for any application under 50 jobs shall meet the same record requirements as projects with 50 or more jobs retentions, which go to the Board of Commerce and Industry. And that's basically, it's a little bit more, but that's the, this resolution remain in effect unless and, until unless the resolution is revoked in writing and submitted to the Board of Commerce and Industry and the Louisiana Department of Economic Development, given adequate notice, and affecting only projects post-dating the revoke, revocation and affecting no applications submitted prior to the revocation. Be it therefore resolved that by the city of Bastrop that a copy of this resolution shall be forwarded to the Board of Commerce and, and Louisiana Economic Development. And that's it. Are there any, any discussion or questions on this before we take it? Does anyone have any questions, counsel? Everyone clear? Okay. What it does, it keeps a company from waiting on you and saying, oh, well, we don't have time to wait, we're going to choose this site in, in Green County, Alabama, because they've already got it where we know what the deal is. Okay. Do I have, do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 19-1874.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Moore, seconded by Councilman Locke, that this resolution be adopted. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Thank you so much. This should help us. Ms. King, Kay King, you got your deal done. Okay. All right. Item 9, Resolution 19-1875, A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the University of Mississippi National Center for Physical Acoustics to allow usage of property in the industrial park by the fire training tower to be used for automatic early warning system for weather. It's my firm belief that partnering with, with, with institutions around the country and around the world even, to do technologically advanced studies is in the best interests of the city of Bastrop, because attention to us, that we are willing to, to do things that's sort of out of the ordinary. I've been talking with the University of Mississippi for over a year until they, they applied for a grant. And this resolution, NOAA, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, you know, our weather people who are, who are behind all the weather modeling and all of that, they're trying a new technology that listens to low-frequency sound waves. Low-frequency sound waves travel great distances. In fact, elephants use low-frequency sound waves. And an elephant can talk from Bastrop to Maruz using low frequencies that we can't even hear. Low-frequency sound waves travel great distances and they are inherent in the formation of tornadoes. So, what this, what this, they're going to have sensitive microphones and equipments, they're going to set them up in an array. And they're going to have- they're going to set them up in an array, and they're going to have, um, um, they're going to be listening in there precisely in a square, and they use the, um, they use a technique of triangulation based upon the Doppler effect and all of that, and they measure the time between, you know, wave is, say, at peak to, at one microphone and at peak to another, and they can tell which direction the sounds come from and how far it is away. And what they want to do is like a six-month study or so. And I just want them to use, utilize, not going to damage the ground, they're going to put some structures up, it's going to have, uh, little domes over the, over the, uh, microphone arrays, four domes, and they need a fifty meter by fifty meter block. And I want you to give me permission to allow them to do it next to the fire training. Uh, they love the location, and, um, it, it's good for Bastrop for us to be involved. What's your pleasure?
Mayor, I move that we enter, we approve, uh, the resolution authorizing you to proceed with this project.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilman Shaw, seconded by Councilman Locke, that we proceed. Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. All opposed? Thank you so much. That, that is great. Uh, item ten, liquor license. Chief Campbell, would you come up, please?
To the mayor and Board of All the Persons, uh, I submit to you the list for liquor license renewals for the calendar year two thousand twenty. Uh, the following establishments, Fiesta Linda, a Class R restaurant, ten sixty-five East Madison Avenue. Handy Stop Number One, sixteen ten West Madison Avenue, a Class A retail dealer, off premises only. Supermark Two, nineteen twenty North Washington Street, a Class A retail dealer, off premises only. Roma Italian Bistro, one twenty-four South Washington Street, Class R restaurant. Zeke's Place, four thirty-two West Madison Avenue, Class B retail dealer, on premises. Johnny's Pizza House Number Seven, sixteen oh one Park Loop Drive, Class B retail dealer, on premises. Porterhouse Liquor, eighteen fifty-one North Washington Street, a Class A retail dealer, off premises only. Stop For You Incorporated, California Stock, nineteen twenty West Madison Avenue, Class A retail dealer, off premises only. LLL Stop and Shop, short stop, one thousand one East Madison Avenue, Class A retail dealer, off premises only. J and LLL Stop and Shop Number Five, seven forty-one Collingston Road, Class A retail dealer, off premises only. Quick Pack, ninety-five oh five Carbon Plant Road, Class A retail dealer, off premises only. Primetime, nine twenty-four Luther Avenue, MLK South, a Class B retail dealer, on premises. Juanito's, eight oh one North Washington Street, Class R restaurant, and Walmart Store Number Ninety-eight, sixty ninety-one Rouge Road, Class A retail dealer, off premises only. Mayor and Board of All the Persons, I submit these to you. They've done the necessary requirements, and I recommend that they be approved for calendar year two thousand twenty.
Chief Campbell has recommended these for approval. What is your pleasure, gentlemen and lady?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Motion's made by Councilman, uh, DeeDee Green, Harry Green, seconded by Councilman Prater. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, chief. The, uh, licenses are approved. Um, I believe we have to expand, is that correct? Are we down to that point? Okay, and Ms. Goldman, what are we asking to expand on the count of?
We, we need to expand the agenda to allow us to give us permission to advertise for these, to move the sewer on the Marvith thirteen bridge.
Right. Uh, the, our engineering firm, not the engineering firm that drew the plans for the bridge, but our engineering firm that supervises all of our paving and sewer, Denman Engineering.
We need to extend.
Extend. Okay, all right then. Um, since you, you all aware of what we're trying to expand for, uh, do we have a motion to expand agenda?
Go move, Mayor.
Second, Mayor.
It's been moved by Councilman Locke, seconded by Councilman Shaw, that we expand the agenda. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So we have to have unanimous consent, and we do have it, is that correct? Okay, so this is, we could not move the sewer until we reached this stage in the development of the bridge, the Montlough King Street Bridge. We couldn't move the sewer until we got the land to do that. We couldn't move the, the other utilities until we did this. And we have to do our part, and that is move the sewer. And the minute that it became available, we got the green light from the state to then bring in the utility companies to do, to move their utilities away from the bridge, we have a sewer line there. So I asked Denman Engineering, upon reaching that point in the construction phase, to do the engineering that's required to move our sewer line over, because it's feeding that, uh, that mechanical plant on Montlough the King and Hendrick Street, in that area. So Denman has done that, and the cost, the cost estimate that they have is around, what, one forty-five thousand? Hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to move our sewer. And, um, and, uh, we have to now put that out for bid so we can get a contract and hurry and get this done. Uh, we need a, we got a motion and a, everybody's.
We need a motion.
Need a motion.
That was, that was.
Oh, that was expand, okay. Thanks, thanks, yeah. Uh, I'm sorry, I'm trying to explain things, uh, because I want to be clear with the people here and people watching, uh, on our YouTube channel. Uh, so we need a motion to put this project out for bids.
All right, Mayor, I'll make them. I'll make a proposal that we do proceed with it.
So it's been moved by Councilman Shaw.
Second.
Seconded by, I heard two ands at the same time.
Mr. Locke.
Mr. Locke? Okay, seconded by Councilman Locke, that we, uh, put this project out for bids. Uh, any discussion?
One quick question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
This will be funded by the project? Or we, we have to take it on our backs?
No, we got it, we got to absorb it, uh, because the, each utility is responsible, energy's paying their own, the water company's paying like fifty grand, I believe, to move their water lines over. And it's in our, our franchise agreements with the utilities that if this kind of situation occurs, that they're responsible to move their, to move their, uh, utilities and somewhere within the right of way. And the bridge is going to be so much wider, uh, the, the, the walkway and the bike way is nine feet by itself, and it's a concrete divider between the traffic of the cars and the, uh, and the pedestrians and the, the bike. So, uh, we have a.
Motion and a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the ayes have it, and we will get this in the, uh, to advertise for bids really soon, probably the next issue of the paper.
Probably next week.
Next week. And, uh, then the process is, we have to let it stay out for, what, thirty days or so minimum?
Yes.
Yes, and we'll accept those bids and try to get this bridge done. It's a lot of work, I mean, a lot of work that we put in this bridge. But we wanted a bridge that's going to last more than a hundred years without any major maintenance whatsoever. It'll save the city so many thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars over, over the life of the bridge, and it will outlive us all. Okay. Next item on the agenda is item, oh, I'm sorry, where were we expanding? We're, we're good. Uh, item eleven, adjourn.
May I move that we adjourn the meeting?
It's been moved by Councilman Locke.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Shaw, that this meeting be adjourned. Any, uh, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.